6:00 PM, Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, City Hall Complex. Did I say December 20, December 1st?
You said December 1st.
Did I say December 1st?
Your birthday, Mayor?
Yes, there you go. Okay. That was just my share.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
I had to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Okay. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Madam Plaik, can you please?
Aye. In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anybody called to the public?
None.
None? Okay. So we'll start with the financial monthly report, A, October financial report. John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have our finance director who's going to give the financial report. She has placed a hard copy in front of Mayor and Council. And in addition to her financial report, at the very last page, we've put in our delinquent water account information at the request of Councilman Diaz. So that's also attached to your report.
Good, thank you. Go ahead.
So tonight, Mayor and members of the council is the October financial report. After four months, we should be right about 33.33% of our budget when it comes to both revenues and expenditures. So for our general fund, at this point, our revenue, based on Table A, is $7,624,459. And also on Table A, the expenditures show you $8,547,867. So at this point, our revenue is sitting at 34%. So we're about 1% higher. And our expenditures are sitting at 31%. So now if you move on to Table B, that is our sales tax. And for the month of October, we collected $887,167, which this year compared to last year is $99,948 more. And for the year, we are $469,336 above October of last year. Now if you move on to Table C, that represents the departments when it comes to the general We still have highlighted the departments that are over the 33.33%. And those departments are the ones that are being watched. They're getting a little bit closer to where they should be. The one that I do want to point out to you, and it's been this way since the beginning, is the animal control. It shows for the entire year. What we budgeted compared to what we thought would be their expenditures, their expenditures are a little higher, mainly due to the fact that last year through COVID, there wasn't as much animal control activity. Our next chart is our streets, which is B.
John, could I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, on the animal control?
Mm-hmm.
What is it that, just off the top of your head, what is it that we are shared to the colony? Half of it?
Yes, sir. It's half their budget. I believe the total budget comes out to close to about a half million dollars, their total budget. We pay half. It's pretty much an offset because the library is just about the same budget, and they pay half, so.
You think?
But it's half.
I know, I know it's, I'm off.
Fifty-fifty.
I know I'm off the, you know, it's nothing to discuss or anything right now, but I think we're going to need to look at this down the road, Mr. Massey, and see what we can do because we need to do something about the shelter and see if we can, you know, down the road discuss, have a study session on some things.
On the actual?
On the actual, yeah. Not on the cost of what we did with the animal control, but I think.
Operational?
Operational and the living conditions of the animals. So just to keep in mind.
So, yes, sir, I'll bring it up to the county, maybe we can have a presentation and a discussion in the next council.
Because, you know, if we're fifty-fifty on this, you know, it'd be nice if.
We get to talk a little bit.
Yeah, talk about it, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
So Table D, which is our HERF and our overweight funds. You'll see that our revenue is at $831,872, and our overweight fees is at $91,200. So revenue, we're sitting quite well. And then for our expenditures, we are sitting lower than budget at $1,086,574 for the HERF. And overweight fees is $160,787, which is, oh, I'm sorry, it's, that's how the difference. It's $642,957, which is 6% lower, and that 6% is the $160,000 number I mentioned. On Table E, which is our sewer, we have collected $1,159,192 in revenue. It's about 28% of the budget. And our expenditures are at $869,786, which is about 30% of the budget. Our next table is the water fund, which is Table F. For water, we have collected $1,297,690, which is 34%. And our expenditures are at $2,142,953, which is at 37%. It's running a little high, and this one is one of them that we are watching. And then the final table that you see is Table G, and this is our sewer, our sanitation, where we have collected $947,612, which is 31% of the budget, and our expenditures are at $758,956, which is 20%. Are there any other questions on those charts before we get to the?
Go ahead, Councilman Horvath.
Yes, Miss, on the, on the, back on the water utility fund?
Sure.
And this expenses, when we have water leaks, is that part of the expense?
If it requires us tearing up streets, fixing the piping, all of that would be part of it. It'd be an expense of the city, yes.
So that would add on to this expense chart, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But the, go ahead. So the loss of water itself is not an expense?
No.
It's the expenses repairing the water leaks and what have you. But the asset of the water is not an expense. We don't purchase our water.
We do the repairs though, to the, where the leaks are at the tanks and.
Yes, that's an expense.
The utility. Okay.
It's a big expense.
Thank you. Were you going to say something?
Yes. But I found that over here on the overweight, I couldn't see if we've seen any increase. We should be getting better increase, I believe, you know, because this goes, this is basically October, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, November, December, which.
Yes.
Perk up on the overweight.
Yes.
And I was going to make the same question as Councilman Horvath on the water, if the repairs, since we had those, the water leak and on the tanks and stuff like that, does it all fall into the same expenditures?
How do you see the proceeds in this year, Councilman?
It's tough, but it should be a lot better than last year.
Good. That's good to hear.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. John, is any of the tax, the bed tax used to support tourism? The bed tax?
Yes, I know what the bed tax is, but.
Yeah.
Supporting tourism is the hard part of the question to answer. I believe we just put our bed tax into our general revenues, right? So our bed tax goes into our general revenues, and then our expenditure authorization by Mayor and Council are listed. If any of those expenditures support tourism, then the answer is yes. But I don't think we have a specific line item within our general fund budget that I can recall off the top of my head that directly supports a tourism function short of the money allocated for the chamber. But short of that, I don't think we have a direct allocation for the support of tourism. We do a lot of activities that support tourism, but nothing directly involved to a department or something like that that's in charge of tourism.
Mayor, I have another question. How much, what amount does the city provide to the chamber? You just mentioned something like that.
I believe, I just looked at this, and I believe the amount, if I'm not mistaken, is $6,500 annually.
$6,500?
$6,500 annually.
$6,500?
To the chamber.
Is that a year?
That's, that's a year, and that's the check we write to them. We also provide support to the chambers with in-kind type of services.
Thank you.
No, nothing? Were you going to be discussing something, you said, about delinquents, or?
Yes.
Were you going to talk about that?
So the last page that's on the packet that was handed out to you tonight is the Water and Sewer Delinquent Report. We had talked about it last month first. I wanted to give you guys an update this month as to where we stand. We do have, we have gained a few contracts, which is good. That means we have a few more people not having their water shut off. Overall, last month, we had approximately $511,000 that was in our delinquent not paid out to us. This month, we're down to $498,000. So we are gaining a little bit. I believe a lot of it has to do with the contracts. People are coming up, and I can't pay this, what can I do? And our revenue is stepping up and saying, let us help you.
Is that a payment plan that you're doing?
Yes.
Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to throw that page in, just to kind of let you see where we stand this month. And every month, you'll get a new updated memo with the different numbers.
Yes, go ahead.
John, and on those delinquents, is Chula Vista included in that? Because you provide sewers for Chula Vista, right?
Yes, in the sewer delinquent, yes.
Okay. Because I saw Valle Verde and the other, but I didn't see anything for Chula Vista.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It says the Valle Verde Water Service Area, that includes Chula Vista.
Okay.
So for sewer, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Sewer and garb, not garbage, just.
No. And our legal have, we've started sending out the secondary letters, which is the final lien notice that you have 30 days to come in and pay your bill, set up a contract with us, or we will start the proceedings. And we have started sending those letters out.
Are you talking about collection or liens?
Do you want to?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Recording liens on property is part of the overall collection effort, so it's just part of it. But what we've done is, my deputy has been working with the finance director, looking at those properties that are owner-occupied, and those are the ones that we can lien really easily. And so that's the ones that have been receiving those letters. And if we don't get proper, you know, involvement from them as far as working out a payment plan or something of that nature, then we just go ahead and we record a lien. That doesn't mean that that's the only thing that we will do. We may go ahead and do small claims actions as well, but for right now, that's like one of the low-hanging fruit options that we can do.
Even if the property is outside its limits?
Yes. Oh, sure, we can still lien them, sure.
Okay.
But we have to provide notice, and that's what we've just been doing by mailing and certified mail as well.
Certified mail with return receipt.
Yep.
But you're having people respond to that letter and coming to you?
Yes. Last week, we had our first 12 go out. I've had eight return receipts come back to me, and only one letter sent back that could not be forwarded. So out of our first week, that's not bad. Now, nobody has come in yet, but they have 30 days to do that.
Yeah, but they're made an intent and effort to make a payment plan with you?
I'm hoping, yes.
Is that what you're doing?
If they do that, then we don't have to worry about a lien.
Well, that's the whole purpose.
Yes, yes.
To get some type of payment plan on it and stuff.
Absolutely.
That's good. Were you going to say something?
Mr. Kissinger, is there any type of interest that's being paid when an account is not being paid for a length, for amount of time?
Interest and penalties on a delinquent account?
Yeah.
There are penalties and late fees, but there's no interest. At this point, there's late fees and, or penalty fees, but not interest charged.
Oh, there's a lot of work to do.
It's endless, Mayor.
As we look, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
As we went over this report, and this is a new report for council, that we used to do this every once in a while, but now we're going to do it every meeting, one of the things you might see that we're talking about, what we're looking at, is separating the numbers for your commercial accounts and your residential accounts. I think that's also important for Mayor and Council and the public to know how many actual commercial accounts we have delinquent. It'll be shocking, I believe, to Mayor and Council to see some of these commercial delinquent accounts and, more even more shockingly, some of the actual businesses that are delinquent. So I think that's important to know that.
Were these accounts wide open?
Caused by COVID? Some of them were open, had the doors wide open during the entire COVID.
Oh, so they were open.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what I said in some of them, you might look.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Gene, are there residents that have outstanding balances over $1,000?
Resident-wise?
That you can remember right now, and it's a long list.
Off the top of my head, for residents, I'm not sure. I can look that up. Most of our residents are 200 or 300, and all of them have come in, and they're on a contract. And they're, almost every resident has stayed on that contract. It's our businesses that have signed up for a contract, and now they're falling behind on their contracts. So that's where we're, now we're going to separate, starting next month, the resident from the commercial, so you guys can see the difference. But our residents, once they get on that contract, they're staying on that contract because we'll just go shut their water off, and then they have to pay the whole bill.
Now, so you can shut water off?
Mm-hmm.
I have one more question. So let's say they are not paying, do you start a new contract? Does it roll over and it go another contract?
No, it does not.
Tell me a little bit about that.
At this point, our contract states that you get one contract. If you fail to pay on that contract, then you have the entire amount due. If they come in, I'm sorry, I really can't pay, I'm out of work, my husband's out of work, between the city manager and myself, we can choose if we want to put them on a secondary contract. After the second contract, if they fail again, they have to pay the bill. At this point, that is what is set up with the city, is after that second failure, they owe us the whole amount.
The whole amount.
Mm-hmm. And for our residents, they're not falling behind on their contracts. It's not our residents, it's our businesses. And it's not all our businesses.
Yeah.
It's a handful.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just have another question before she leaves. As far as the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, have we received those funds? Have we used some of them, and what have we used them for? And what is the balance?
Do you want to touch on this one? Do you want me to touch on this one?
If she can't answer the question tonight, you know, if she could provide a report to us, you know, just to let us know. Because there's residents that are asking, you know, what happened to those funding that we got from the federal government?
Sure. I think I answer this one, because about every meeting, but the CARES Act that we received, Mayor and Council authorized those to pay the public safety retirement obligation, and we've paid that in full.
We paid it in full in July.
I can provide your part with that. I know that it always, it seems like this is the second time the same question comes up during the conversation about utility payments. There is a mechanism, and there are care monies available for any resident in Santa Cruz County for the effects of COVID or unable to pay their utility bills. There is money that has been allocated by the federal government that's available for them, and it's available for them immediately. I can share with Mayor and Council, and I think we have this on our webpage, the link to get those funds to help them pay their water, their electrical, their sewer, or their garbage bills. So that's available to them right now. So that money's available to them.
What about to small businesses that owe money, that owe water?
Yeah, I think there's also monies available for small businesses. I'm not sure if I sent this to Mayor and Council. I know I was preparing for that by getting all the different links, so I haven't sent it. I'm getting a no. Okay, I haven't sent it to you all, but I was researching and trying to prepare all the links. I think a lot of it's done with the SBA, Hector, that's a Small Business Association. There's, there's an application process where you go on, and you're able to receive funding from the federal government to assist you because of COVID with CARES money. The city itself doesn't have a department set up to disperse those funds, but there are other entities within the state of Arizona that can help our small businesses and such to get that done. And I'll share the links and the information that I researched on that with you. I just haven't gone around to getting it done yet.
And to piggyback on John, if somebody does come in and say, you know what, I really can't afford this due to COVID, or whatever the case may be, our revenue department is trained in saying, you know what, we do have a couple places that can help you within the county. They give them the information, and we do have residents who are currently on those programs, and it's all in the system as to, you know, don't shut their water off because they're on this program. And I think, I believe it's 10 to 12 right now that are currently on it, and there are more, we're hoping that will get on the program because they're asking us about once or twice a week. We don't get a whole lot asking us, but we do get a few a week that will ask us what kind of programs are available for us.
Go ahead, Council.
Mr. Kissinger, can we send a letter? You know, this is good to know for us to know, but can we send a letter to our residents explaining what you just told us, that these funds are available?
Sure, I think we can put, we even have the application available for the utility assistance in our public library. I know you have it. I think we have it over at Public Works. I think we have some here. But I guess we could get something out in our, in our billing to each resident, saying, hey, listen, if you're having problems, or maybe even print it on our bill.
It can be printed on the bill.
If you're having a problem due to COVID, you know, here's a link, or here's an address, or here's a phone number where you can go obtain this assistance.
Yeah, so in the future, we'll expect it in our bill to be printed?
Excuse me?
So in the future, would it be printed in our, in our bill?
So I can get back to you exactly what the mechanism will be to get that information out, but I'm glad that you brought it up, and we'll do everything possible to get that information out in our next.
To our residents?
Billing.
Yes.
I know you can go through the colony, too.
But that's what I'm talking about. The county has the funds.
The county has it.
Yes, sir.
They've helped a lot of people.
We have the application, we have the applications that's put out, yeah.
With the county, Hector? They can help you immediately, not only, not only with the water and bill, but they're helping you with the rent.
With the rent?
With the rent, utilities, mortgage.
And show that you, that was COVID-related, and they'll help you immediately.
Yeah, come on up, Robert.
Yes.
Mayor, can we have the?
Yes.
Can we have Robert?
Yes, Robert, go ahead.
All right, sorry about that, impromptu little speech here. So, yeah, the county did receive around $400,000 from the CARES Fund that's set to expire soon, and by soon, I mean probably at the end of this month. Currently, they were allocating up to $4,000 per household to cover utilities, mortgages, rent, what have you, anything considered a utility. We at the housing have since been receiving checks and back rent to exceed $5,000. So the $4,000 cap has been moved up. Really, if you can prove an impact with COVID, which is the catch-all, you lost your job, you were infected by COVID, somebody that lives in your household, that's an immediate, automatic acceptance of the program or qualification of it. So, yes, the money is there. Unfortunately, it's set to expire, and that's on the IRUMA program run by the county. Mary Doll, our friend, she's the one running it. Second one would be through DES, which is the ERAP program. That's specific for rental, rental assistance only. And our friends at CCAP, they're always, you know, busting at the seams with people asking for assistance. But again, you have to have been impacted by COVID in some way, shape, or form to qualify for that benefit. And more and more, I've seen that that $4,000 cap is going up. So we at the housing have received, I mean, just a check this morning for $5,500 to cover back rent. So we have those links. I can probably just shoot them up to you, John. We, actually, we drafted a letter for our residents, so I can just, you know, carbon copy it your way. But that's, those are the three, I guess, entities who can help us with this situation.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Thompson, is Mary Doll still the contact person at the county?
Absolutely.
Yes, go ahead.
One last question. That's great to know, and most of us know about that, but our residents don't, and I've been approached numerous times about it. So it would be really nice to write something up from the city for the residents to receive in their, in their bill.
Definitely. And I'll meet up with John and get all those links and everything to include, I mean, just about anything we can put out there.
Try to get that out on the next bill.
Sure.
Thank you, Robert. Is that enough? Is that our financial report?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, item number five, discussion item A, discussion and action to appoint the acting city manager effectively immediately. At this time, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Massey as, as acting city manager until probably sometime in January, when we get the consultant back on time. A second. Hearing none? I favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor? Oops. Move to amend the motion.
Call for the question. Let the emerald have a roll call vote.
Mayor, can we discuss this?
You want to discuss it?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I think there's, is Mr. Massey, I'm not going to say qualified, but is Mr. Massey not going to have any issues legally, being our attorney for the city and giving directions to directors in the city, you know? Is that going to be a conflict?
I don't think it will.
Legal?
Yeah, I don't think it's what you would call a conflict. There might be some, you know, just issues that we can resolve on a case-by-case basis, but I have, of course, the understanding is that Mr. Kissinger remains deputy city manager, and he'll be very, very involved in day-to-day operations. So, right, everyone would have to pull together on this. This is just something like it's an interim situation. There's been precedents here at the city in the past that this has happened, and it has kept happening on occasion in other cities, but I agree, this should just be a short-term situation.
This isn't until the consultant can come back to us in January, so we can get through December. I'm not saying he's going to be there for six months.
Mr. Mayor, I can.
Good, go ahead.
Yeah, and if the motion could also reflect that the same salary condition as Mr. Kissinger as his temporary acting city manager?
Yes.
Okay.
And I said I called for the question.
Yeah, all right.
All right. All right.
Are we finished in discussion?
Yeah, I said I called for the question.
So you're not giving us a chance to talk?
No, sir.
Why? Why?
Mr. Massey, explain to me what call for the question means.
So the presiding officer has a lot of discretion on allowing discussion or on a matter, but there is a motion. It's been seconded and the presiding officer can call for the question.
Let the roll call vote, please.
Mayor Carrillo?
Aye.
Like Mayor Roll, please?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Massey, I'm saying from voting on this, because I don't think we have had the right to even talk about it, so I will not even vote on it.
All right. Continue. Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you very much, Letty. B, discussion, possible action to appoint an interim presiding magistrate for Nogales Municipal Court effective January 3, 2022. Mr. Massey, could you explain that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the people up on the hill at the Superior Court have recognized a really good judge when they see one, which is, of course, the judge that mayor and council hired a couple of years ago and has been our presiding magistrate now and I think doing just an excellent job. And, but she's moved on. She's gotten, promoted. And so what we need to do is appoint an interim presiding judge. And so the city charter amendments from last year and the ordinance that was adopted regarding the city municipal court, now instead of, in the previous situation that was presented to the city a couple of years ago, where the presiding Superior Court judge had to apply or assign essentially a pro temp here at the city, the power resides in city council to appoint an interim up to six months. And the interim does not have to be a member of the Arizona bar. It doesn't have to, in other words, meet the qualifications set forth as a permanent presiding magistrate judge. This would be an interim up to six months. And the idea is, in that time, the position can be posted and mayor and council can conduct interviews and select the next permanent presiding magistrate.
Because the person that's right now, that's pro temp, that's been helping a judge, she's willing to be, to be part of this and she's been actually be doing it pro bono.
Apology.
Yeah. Nobody, she hasn't been paid, she doesn't want to be paid for it. But if she's gonna be taking this position as interim, well, of course, we have to come up with some type of, of payment, which probably be the same salary as Judge, is that what it was, John? As Judge Cartwright?
Mr. Mayor, staff is, staff is recommending that we appoint the pro temp as the interim and that you direct staff to sit with her and negotiate a month-to-month contract at the same salary rate that she has indicated as Judge Cartwright.
But the whole purpose of this is so that as soon as the year starts, John, you and human resources will start, after, after we vote, actually, start the process for selection of, of possible candidates for the position.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're anticipating that the further direction given to staff by mayor and council is that we immediately post and start collecting applicants for the city magistrate position and presenting them to mayor and council at the earliest convenience for your selection, Mr. Mayor.
So we plan to do that beginning of the year, as soon as we have a council meeting.
We expect to do that. The first council meeting in January, we're anticipating, excuse me? The first council meeting in January, which Letty just informed me is the fifth, the day after my birthday.
Okay.
Since we're talking about birthdays, right? We'll bring back to you a month-to-month contract for your approval for the interim city manager. And we'll also, I mean.
Start the process.
We'll start the process starting in January to, to go out and search for, we'll, we'll start posting.
They're gonna publicize it. No.
Permanent magistrate. If that's the direction council wants us to go.
But that's the motion I'm gonna make, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, so that we'll do that. So hearing that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Just go ahead.
Thank you. It's nice to know there'll be a process in selecting. It's nice to know there will be a process in selecting the next judge.
It, it's whatever process, mayor and council.
Thank you.
Okay, our favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it? Number C, or C, discussion, direction, possible action on including or not including state land during the upcoming annexation efforts. Maria, will you please?
Yes, oh, thank you. My name for the record is Maria Mask and I'm a principal with the Planning Center in Tucson, Arizona, representing this project. I think you all received the memorandum as part of the package. So what I'm gonna do is go really quickly to precisely maps only to clarify any questions you might have about the process and the options that you have in front of you. And then we'll proceed with the rest of it. So I'm just gonna go fast. If you have any questions, you can stop me at any time. Yes.
And mayor and council, I know we printed a smaller version of this. If anybody wants a big one, I got a few, two big ones, big ones here. Tell me all.
Yeah, you might be able to share. I only brought like five and I do need one because I can't see that over there. So anyway, well, he does that, let me get. So basically, most of you have seen this map already. And what it does is defines the parcels that were utilized to define the boundary, which are the parcels in blue, one, two, and three, to define the boundaries of the larger annexation. And then the parcels that are outlined in the, in the bottom right corner that are listed in there encompass this, this, this parcel's in this area up here. And those are those in there. Okay? I'm not gonna read them since you have them in front of you. And so that is basically the area and then you have Coronado Forest on that side and on this side as well. And the green here is the city boundary. So the, originally, the idea was to at least look at the possibility of including the state land. This orange piece is state land. That is state land. This is state land. And, and there are statutory requirements that the city need to follow in order to include state land in an annexation area. The state land is not like a property owner that counts a vote or not counts a vote. They have to follow certain procedures that are summarized in the memorandum that we included to you. And, and that, one of those is that it needs written consent from the Arizona State Land Department State Selection Board when annexation involves state land, state lands managed by the Arizona State Land Department. And in addition to that, there's another requirement in the, in the annexation, in the Arizona Revised Statutes Regarding Annexation, which states that you cannot create, it is prohibited to create county islands. So with those two, we had a meeting with the State Land Department regarding this issue. And their issue is that they gave us what needs to be done. Not only do you need to have the written consent, and we can look at the opportunities, you know, all of these opportunities were presented before. I'm sorry, I kinda went ahead a little bit. And the opportunities for including all of this area or any annexation in this area are major corridor support, shorter term development strategy, impact of I-11 segment on Nogales, Wickenburg, complement development plan, and occurring on Nogales, Sonora, Mexico, along the Mexico border, which includes a big city land in this area down here, right at the border. And then partnership, potential partnership with the Arizona State Land Department, has a Saguarita example, and then support master plan areas, which include the Kino Springs, La Estancia, all of this master plan community, the airport master plan, and many others in the area. And, and then we looked at the challenges and I think, sorry. Yeah, the challenges. And that's where we had to meet with the state land and kinda begin to see how this was gonna play out. So the challenges, as mentioned before, the Arizona Revised Statutes require written consent from the ASLD State Selection Board when annexation involves those lands. And then prohibits the annexation, the, the creation of county islands. And then in addition to that, Arizona State Land Department has requirements for being annexed into a jurisdiction. And those requirements include not only the, the selection board, written consent, which includes the governor, the attorney general, and the treasurer, and they meet very infrequently. In the past nine years, they have met four times related to issues concerning state land department purchase, I mean, annexations and those kinds of things. And requires, the state land department requires a plan area development or a PAD that serves as a zoning bank that must be present, presented at the same public hearing as the annexation. That means that your annexation process is gonna extend as long as they need time to complete that plan area development. We have been involved in some of those. It can be a year or even longer than that. Then it also requires a legislatively approved pre-annexation development agreement, PADA, to be completed prior to the annexation at that public hearing that you will be contemplating the annexation. That's another lengthy process that is going to probably take more than a year to complete. So those are facts and challenges about those three pieces of land that are owned by the state, which is this orange, that one, and that one. And so the, given those, we had to look at, you know, what are the two scenarios that you have in front of you? And one of the scenarios is including the state land and is your long-term scenario. It's gonna take a long time to complete this annexation with the boundary that you see in there, all of this area here. And that, those are the processes that I just listed, but I included it so that you have them in the map. And then the other option is a faster track where you exclude the, those pieces of land in orange in there. However, the trick is that you cannot create county islands. So because of this large property here, you cannot include the property in each, in an annexation because it will create this county island in there. Then we have the same issue with this one in a large property in here. So what we had to finally look at is looking at two annexation areas that can be running concurrently. However, they are treated as separate annexations. And each one of those annexation areas need to conform to all of the statutory requirements. And each one of them is going to be counted as, you know, the votes for each one of them independently of property owners, the valuation percentages required by law, independently by each other. And in the future, if you decide that it's time to include all of the state land, then this will be city boundary, that will be city boundary. All you have to do is annex that strip in the middle. So that is the, the second option. And within that option, well, there's another option, which is, do you want to proceed with one side, annexation one, which will impact the fiscal models? Because if you're only doing this, then we're not going to be preparing modeling for this two in here. And this is in the case of that. So we would not be spending your money and preparing those two models if you're only gonna deal with that one. We will only do the fiscal model for that section in there. And if you decide that you wanna do only annexation area two, then we're only gonna proceed with those two fiscal models and not include this one in here. If that is the choice, then the reporting is going to take out all of the housing that already lives in this area, which actually provides shared revenues, which is one of the main reasons that you annex. So I want you to have clearly all of the issues to determine whether you wanna go with this two, whether you want, and which will be the fast track, whether you want to choose one over the other. And, and this, of course, include the airport, the big parcel of the city in the border, and this area that we talked, we have, we had a meeting with the owner of this property and they're really eager to be part of the annexation, which include all of this area here. And it also include all of the master plans communities in this area. However, there are some population housing already existing, but the modeling is basically on what is projected. So, so those are all of the facts for this two, and all of the choices that you have. To us as planners, it makes sense to go with those two concurrently, but that is up to the city. And, and you will know more knowing your constituents, what are the additional political or, or local pros and cons to this. I don't know if you have any question, but that's pretty much the presentation I have for you to clarify.
Maria, I've had discussions already with the, two of the biggest property owners on, on annex, the one you have on annexation two and their support 100% on being annexed.
You're talking about?
I'm talking about section two, annexation two.
Oh.
Kino Springs area.
Yeah, 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 and that's the yellow in there.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, same.
That is the boundary of La Estancia, Yerba Buena.
Yeah, no, but I've also had the one all the way to the border.
Uh huh.
Yeah. I had a conversation with Mr. Mills already. He was in my office yesterday. And they're in support of annexation 100%. So, you know, I, I think it's only right that we go after the Model 1 and Model 2 at the same time and, and, and just disregard the state property. Yeah. Not, just leave that one alone because we don't have time to wait for five years.
Yeah.
For the governor to get together with somebody and decide that we can have it. So, so, you know, I don't know how the members of the council feel about that, but I think that's the way we, we should go on it and, so we can proceed with this and get it, get as much information from you beginning of the year so that we can, you know, go after voting so that we can get legal in the process of going through, through the assessor's office and then for us to go after signatures and then finally go after an ordinance on this down the road, so.
Mr. Mayor, it was.
Yes.
It was agendized for discussion and direction, possible action. So, and I think that's what we're looking for, just a definite action. We want Maria to proceed excluding the state land. And moving forward with annexations area one and two. To bring her modeling forward for mayor and council as soon as possible so you can see the modeling on that and we can start moving.
Yeah.
Moving forward in that direction.
Yeah.
I don't know if.
Well, that's.
A vote's required, Michael, to get that.
I mean, a vote would be helpful, but it seems like there's some consensus on council to do that. But, yeah.
I would recommend doing a, a motion and a vote, Mayor.
Yeah, well, I'd move to vote on, on excluding the state land, that parcel in the middle, and, and continue with the other process, the process of the other two sections.
Sections one and two.
Yeah, sections one and two.
Can we?
Yeah. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, just got a question, Maria. On top of the state land in the middle, is that? On top of the state land in the middle, is that properties or is that, excuse me, residential or right there?
You're talking right there?
Uh huh.
I really have to look at it. Some of it, if you look in the larger map, it doesn't seem like there is much development.
Can it be wrapped where, you know, we cover?
Maria, I've seen that area, and if there's any residence, it's very sparse.
Yeah, it's very sparse.
It's the residents that are south of.
Would it be possible to cover, you know, if we're going to cover, cover what we cover and leave, just leave the state areas?
You mean like bringing this up to here?
Uh huh.
I think there's a reason why we didn't bring it in there, and it's because if we, yeah, we might be able to. It's those four parcels. We will, we will look at the.
But I think the council is trying to say if you can bring this down this way and then back across.
Yeah, okay.
Is that what you were?
Yeah. If it's possible, if not, then.
So it will be just.
Why leave it out?
That is what you're making and.
Would that make, would that land lock it?
Let me go back and look at it, and I'll let you know. I don't think so.
It doesn't look like it would.
Yeah, I don't think so.
And I don't know that there is any restrictions on the width in here. The only restrictions is on the width within the annexation, which is this portion here, which is okay. Okay. The one parcel that we cannot include is this one, because it's a large parcel, and that will create a, an island. You're correct.
I wouldn't want to delay it. You know, just, if it's possible, let's do it.
Yes, okay.
Leave it as is.
We'll do that, Ms. Mayor.
Is there any more discussion on this? Here now in all the favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Yes, I have it. Thank you very much, Maria.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, will you have this done by tomorrow, Maria?
Ms. Mayor?
Probably at the end of December, beginning of January, you'll have everything.
No.
Does that work?
I'm joking, Maria.
She guaranteed me that she could have it done tomorrow if we can excuse her, because she has to get back to work on this right away.
I don't even want to imagine what you're going to say.
You don't have to work until 10 o'clock, Maria.
What was that?
You only have to work till 10 o'clock.
Can she be excused, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
No, and I actually wanted to guess, you know, let you know that I was just going to go back to Oro Valley now, so.
Yes.
So thank you very much. I'm glad to see everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Maria.
You have a Merry Christmas, Maria.
Safe holidays.
All right?
Safe holidays.
We're not going to see each other again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And D now, discussion possible action regarding rules and procedures of city council meetings. Mr. Messi, you, just whatever you did with that, I don't know.
Well, I looked online for a couple of different procedures that are posted from different cities, including our prior rules from 2005. And I really just tried to slim it down as much as possible and, you know, codify the current way that council has been doing business for the last few years that I've been here. It's really not my desire to change anything, but maybe just to make things very explicit about what should happen or could happen. But I'm certainly willing to take any direction from any council member. I put this out as a draft, and I mentioned in my email yesterday, this is really your document. If, you know, if you decide to adopt this, either as presented or as revised, this becomes your agreement among yourselves, that this is how you're willing to conduct business. Obviously, some things are written in the charter, such as that the mayor presides at the meeting. In the mayor's absence, it's the vice mayor. But then I, you know, it's implicit, if the mayor and vice mayor are not present for whatever reason, then somebody has to be selected to preside. And so I just put, you know, a standard type concept that the city clerk would call the meeting to order, we'd have the pledge of allegiance, and then the first item of business is to select the presiding officer for that meeting. But those are the sorts of things that I just, you know, tried to put down in a way that maybe is orderly and clear, but I'm ready to take any direction and feedback that you have on this.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Messi, from this document that you gave us, is there any sections you could say are new compared to what's added and what was?
I think some things in here are new from the previous rules. For example, the.
Identify them, please.
Yeah, the rules in the, from 2005, mayor, had some really lengthy discussions on how to draft an agenda, how to post an agenda, all those sorts of things. I mean, that's really staff-type activity in conjunction with the mayor. So I'm really focusing just on rules of procedure. But to make it explicit, for example, that, you know, the mayor can call people out of order. I think the mayor has, you know, been very light in, you know, telling people that you're out of order, you know, closing debate, calling for questions, things like that, but that's in here. So I don't know that there's anything that I can point out that is brand new. It's, yeah, I'm kind of trying to present it, you know, in the order that the meetings do get conducted in. Well, for example, what might be new that wasn't in the previous rules is three consecutive unexcused absences under Roman numeral two attendance, C. Three consecutive unexcused absences from regular meetings may result in the question of whether the office of council member is vacant, being placed on the next agenda. And so what that really does is just create a process. There is a state law in Title 38 that says an office is vacant if for three consecutive months, the office holder fails to perform the duties of the office. And so here, the duty of the office of city council member, obviously, is to attend council meetings, you know, and participate accordingly. And so if that were to ever happen, just putting a means by which it would be like orderly to put it on the council agenda for, for possible action. And possible action would be to declare the seat vacant. But the contemplation would be, you'd be reaching out to this person, you'd figure out what's going on, and this would be for unexcused absences. And so there's a procedure in there for the mayor to excuse absences. And, you know, because we all know that there are occasions on which people can't attend meetings. And the other thing that is, I think, brand new is Roman numeral nine, which is meeting parliamentarian, which is to make explicit that the reason why the city attorney attends meetings, in addition to provide legal advice on any particular issue, is to be the meeting parliamentarian. And so what B there says is that the city attorney would have to make sure that the meetings are conducted in accordance with law. That means the open meeting law and any other laws that relate to what can be discussed and how that they're being discussed. But also these rules of procedure. So this is a way of directing the city attorney, that if you're going to adopt these rules, then the city attorney should make sure that, okay, this is my guidance to say, okay, this is how we should be doing things. And so if questions do come up, pull out the rules. You know, and I hope that that's not a common thing, but if, that's the idea, is like, try to have these discussions ahead of time, so that if there are questions, hopefully there's an answer in there somewhere.
Mr. Messi?
Go ahead.
Mr. Messi, well, I don't know, are you the acting city manager or the attorney sort?
On this one, I'll be the city attorney.
Okay, for legal opinion. I noticed that there's not, nothing on, call for the question on here. Is that part of the Robert rules that we're modeling this?
Well, the call for the question, we can, we can make that more explicit, but it's basically that we've, we've had those situations where people do call for, for the questions in the past, and that cuts off debate, so. But, you know, it also, if there's any question on how the mayor is conducting a meeting, you can appeal to the council as a whole.
Okay, can you explain to us how the call to the question works?
Yeah, the call to the question is with the mayor, who's the presiding officer, if a motion is, is on the table and it's seconded, and the mayor doesn't believe that the continued debate, such as, I mean, it's like difficulty on nominations, you know? If you want to nominate someone, how do you orderly present the nominations? If you present one nomination, and there's a second, and there's a majority, then there's no need to go, you know, to have multiple nominations on the floor at the same time. So, but that's what call to the question does, is it just tries to make the process more orderly.
But according to Robert's rule, if somebody calls for the question, it has to be second, and then it has to be voted on.
Right. And this is not necessarily Robert's rules. So, Robert's rules are not part of the city rules of procedure or city charter or anything like that. Robert's rules, if you want to adopt Robert's rules, you know, go ahead and adopt Robert's rules, but that's, that's not what this is.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Messi, right now when we voted, when you abstain from voting, maybe you can correct me on this, when you abstain, that one person automatically goes to the majority of the vote, right?
And I think that's what Robert rules does, but I've attended different city attorney conferences and, you know, for years, and the basic consensus is, Robert's rules is guidance, don't adopt them. It gets very, very detailed, very particular, as the rule that Councilman Baharik has just mentioned. But on this rules, what it, what it says is that for a motion to carry, it has to have a majority of vote of council members present and voting. In that situation, you don't really have to say that a council member who doesn't vote goes with the majority. It's who's present and voting. And then it also says that a council member can decline to vote for any reason. If you, you know, and, and council member mentioned the reason why he wasn't comfortable, so that, he didn't even have to do that, just said, I don't want to vote. And so I think, but that, what that means is, the majority then is going to be measured by those people who are voting. So.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Messi, so your, your section over here on nine B, to make sure where the meeting runs as it is, right? And is number seven C, can you read it? Please.
Do you want me to read it aloud?
Yes, please.
Seven six.
Is that part something that was already on it?
The mayor shall give each person of council an opportunity to speak on the motion. So that would clarify in the future that anybody who wants to speak on the motion can speak on the motion. But that's your opportunity to adopt that.
But that was already under our regulations or rules, right?
But these rules haven't been adopted yet.
But we had some 2005, that's why I asked you.
Well, now that's, let me speak to that.
What's new and what's not?
So, these would be adopted by an order of city council, and it really is an attempt to regulate the conduct of city council. But city council, as you understand, is a legislative body. And so by another order, you can amend these rules. And so in effect, it's, it's their guidelines, and so at any issue that arises, and the rules seem to be, you know, difficult to apply, the council could suspend the rules by majority. And so it's not something that really, you know, puts any kind of limitations on future councils. And so the reason why 2005, we haven't referred to those rules, you know, I haven't referred to them since I've been city attorney, and I don't think the city attorney has been referring to those rules for a long time. And the reason is that one city council, by simply passing an order or a motion, which is what is potentially in front of you tonight, can't control future city councils. And so after the passage of time, the rules essentially fade and are no longer effective. So when new city council members join the council, such as in January of 2023, we might want to review these rules and re-adopt them, or set them aside, or revise them. Because what that would be is that the new city council would agree that there's going to be some rules that are going to control the procedure of the meetings for that city council. So the 2005 rules, they're not effective to, to control or apply to the city council, unless the city council wants to do that. And I looked at that, there's a lot of, you know, discussion in those rules relating to, like I said, areas that the state law controls, such as how to prepare a notice, an agenda, things of that nature. And, you know, so I just tried to focus on how to conduct meetings.
Okay. Basically, the other, other new things that I see is, and I'm good with them, is basically on the, on eight decorum of meeting F through I. I don't recall the 2005, but I've got no issues, which is part of the cell phone or deals, you know? Basically, thank you for allowing to answer a phone and, and, you know, outside the chamber. And, you know, being able to text as I work at the same time as we're in the meetings.
Right. And of course, there's a balance that's trying to be met there, is don't disrupt the meeting, but at the same time, if there's serious issues or important matters, you know, there's just balance. Everyone should just be as polite as possible on making sure that meetings are conducted orderly.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
On item eight, section G, which says council members shall not use any electronic devices during executive sessions, does that include our tablets?
That's a good question. I think anything that's possible to record or transmit, maybe we should say electronic telecommunications devices. Tablets, you can take notes, but.
Well, you can email through the tablet.
With that?
You can use email through the tablet.
Right. Well, the idea is then, are you emailing possibly confidential information? I mean, just for that period of time? And I've seen that in other rules, that, you know, it's just an agreement, somewhat more than a gentleman's agreement, but an agreement that you're not going to use electronic devices, just so that the appearance is not there, that you're engaging in communication where you might be sharing confidential information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to vote on this, Mr. Messi. Do we need to vote on this?
Well, do you, is it ready for adoption? I mean, it's.
You want to adopt this one right there?
It's up for council. If you're ready to adopt this, and there's no revisions or anything, you know, it's your rules, it'll be up to you, if that's, if that's the will of the council.
This document?
Is there anything different than what we currently have, or is it?
Well, what we currently have, mayor, is just, you know, some understandings of how to proceed. Obviously, the, the city charter does say that the mayor will preside, and the mayor, by presiding, does have some discretion that is maybe being limited a little bit by this, I would say, but, such as, you know, on the issue of call to the question and other areas. But.
But anybody can call for the question.
Right, anybody can call for the question. But, but what this does, and I saw this in another council rules, is that everyone is going to be given the opportunity to speak, and that's a gentleman's agreement. Is everyone going to be given an opportunity to speak?
How many times, Mr.? How many times did Mr. want to call for the question?
Oh, Mayor!
Okay.
You know, at least a dozen, or.
Some of you weren't here, but you called for the question.
Right, right.
Okay, so, and what did I do? Honored it.
Yeah.
Didn't I?
Right, but now, remember that any particular action on a procedural basis, that I think I'm putting in here kind of explicit, can be appealed to the city council as a whole. So somebody would have to say, I appeal, you know, that decision, and if that appeal gets seconded, then what you do is you could reverse the call to the question. So, it's, everything is subject to the majority of city council. As long as the majority of city council is comfortable with how the mayor is proceeding, then the mayor has a lot of discretion. But if a majority of city council feels otherwise, there's a mechanism to appeal the action of the chair and overrule the action of the chair on a vote.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So pretty much, in your opinion, it's aligned to the charter, some of this.
I, oh, of course, I wouldn't put anything out here that's not aligned.
But you said earlier that most, everything that's written here in this draft is aligned to the charter, so, so it is aligned?
Yes.
All of it is aligned to the charter?
Correct, and, and state law. So there's charter, and there's state law, and such as that provision there, if a city council member, for whatever reason, just stops showing up for meetings, that's aligned with that provision in state law.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and, and one more, as far as like aligned with state law, I saw in another rule from another council, which I thought, yeah, you probably don't need to write it, but it was explicit, so I made explicit, speakers will speak to the question, you know, and that, again, helps making sure that we don't go outside the boundaries of what's been agended, and so we don't inadvertently have a open meeting law violation. But again, that would be something mostly for the chair to, to enforce. If the mayor believes that, okay, we're getting off the topic, he can say, okay, let's stay on to the topic, but also if the city attorney says, okay, there, there, we're also potentially making an open meeting violation, then that's my job to step in and say, Mayor, let's bring it back to the topic at issue. But so, it's just, speakers will speak to the topic or the issue.
That's happened before. All right, let's move to reports.
Do you want to have a motion?
You want to?
I mean, I don't know.
You want to vote on that? All right, let me come motion.
So moved.
Okay. For a second? All right. I guess we had enough discussion?
The clerk wants to know what the motion is, Mr. Mayor.
Well, what does it say there in the motion?
Possible action.
Regarding rules of procedures, what Mr. Messi wrote, and all those 15 minutes that he spoke about.
Oops.
All right.
To, to adopt these.
Yes, yes.
That, that's what we thought you were saying. Clarifying.
Clarify it, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, reports, John, update on city annex building.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to report to mayor and council that I just received the communication from my architect on the, the process of the, of the construction plant, and he totally anticipates having them ready by the end of the year as promised. There was a couple of things that we needed to go through, one was, are we going to provide generated power for the building in its entirety? The answer to that was yes, so that had to be revisited. The other issue that came up was getting the proper electrical service to the building. I guess the building was built in the early 60s, and those wouldn't, the, the electrical requirements don't even match any type of code or anything, so we're going to have to have those redone. But the good news is, I believe we'll have some construction plans ready by the end of the year. I'm anticipating at the very beginning of the year, time, time and, and everything permitting, we will do our, our best to get those plans into the hands of qualified contractors for bid process, and bring the, the most responsible bidder to mayor and council for approval, so we can move forward with the, the construction on it, and get moving on that building.
And when you get to the contractors, is that going to be both floors, John, or is it going to be just the top?
So, I think as staff, we haven't really narrowed that down, but what I'm anticipating us doing is asking our bidders to bid it in two different phases.
All right.
So it gives the city the flexibility to either do phase one or phase two at the same time, or just phase one first, and then phase two. So, keeping that in mind, we'll probably, we don't want to limit ourselves, because maybe phase one and phase two at the same time make more sense, so we want to give the best options for mayor and council to make the best decisions.
I'm sure the cost will be a difference too, if it's.
Yeah, well.
If it's both.
That'll, that might play on it a little bit.
Okay.
And, and that's really all my report at this time, Mr. Mayor. I think we're, come next year, we'll have a lot more information available from mayor and council.
But I hope we can get something done by the beginning of the year.
Yeah, sir.
Okay. A, consideration possible action of liquor license 2021-11, approval of recommendation of the issuance of liquor license for Mr. James Milton Kason for Black Tie Imports 450 West Gold Hill Road, Nogales, Arizona.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hear none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eight, orders, consideration possible action of order 2021-12-073, in order of the council of Nogales, Arizona, approving a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the necessary improvements to Industrial Park Drive.
So moved.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Once, once we approve this, how long will it take so we can start the, the actual work and?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, John.
So, what you are approving today is the application of this grant?
Oh, the application?
Yeah, the application, or the receiving the grant, Juan?
Receiving the grant.
Receiving the grant. We anticipate not starting this project, we're anticipating not starting this project until next fiscal year. Our, our matching comes out of, of next fiscal year's budget, so, in reality, we're looking, and I'm always, you'll notice, I'm always very cautious about saying, we're going to start in June, because a lot of things, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but we anticipate hopefully starting this close to, or at the beginning, the, close to the end of this fiscal year, at the, or the beginning of next fiscal year, has been my conversations with our city attorney on that.
What, what is our match on that grant?
Our match on that is $391,292.
And it's not.
Or half a million dollars of ADA money.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to just clarify that this grant is for phase one of Industrial Park Drive, is not the entire Industrial Park Drive, is from more or less where ADA will be ending the project, close in front of IHOP, including the intersection, the flats at Bell Road, done with Portland cement concrete, and up to about 300 feet passing Main Road Drive. That is phase one. Phase two is a future project coming, we already secured another grant for, for the second portion.
The second, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Guerra, that area where it's getting flooded, what, what is the, are you engaged with the county? Are they doing anything to help us out with the, with the flooding issue on, on that street, or on that, that particular piece of the street?
Not really at this point, there are, we have seen the possibility of creating like a detention basin upstream, when future developments comes, and Mr. Bars and Noes Garcia's properties, they will create detention basins that will help with the flooding in the area, but no.
Mr. Guerra, how far does the return from ADA, how far does it go, all the way to IHOP, from Mariposa, the return?
Oh, you mean the, the.
From the entrance, yeah, from the intersection.
Oh, okay. It's about 100, less than 100 feet, it's just north of Bell Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a little piece, that will be, the right away, by the way, is for the city, it starts there.
Isn't that near that intersection?
No, it's not near that intersection.
All right, thank you very much.
One just quick question, Mayor.
Yes.
And John, just, you know, formally, still, on the, on this contract, it still has a city, acting city manager, Robert Thompson, does that, all that have to need get updated? Page 14.
Page 14 of the contract with ADA?
Uh huh.
We'll, we'll make sure we acquire the, the proper signature for that.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Thank you.
We'll, we'll make the correction.
Is there any more discussion? They have the, they have the mayor as city attorney, too.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I think you have Mr. Messi and the mayor flipped.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. B, consideration possible action of order 2021-12-074, in order of the council of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing application for congestion mitigation and air quality funds from Arizona Department of Transportation.
So moved.
Second. Thank you very much, discussion. Hear none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. C, consideration possible action of order 2021-12-075, in order of the council of the city of Nogales, reclassifying the current AP accountant within the department to a senior accountant.
So moved, Mayor.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Why, why are we voting on this? Isn't this the city manager's responsibility to hire, fire, and appoint and?
Yes, go ahead.
The, the reason why I selected to put this on the mayor and council's agenda is because it does have a budget impact, and that's why I'm bringing it forward for mayor and council's approval, because of the budget impact. I'm not hiring anybody, it's a reclassification of one of our employees that does have budget impact on, on the, on the budget that you all approved for me to, for this year.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. John, I have a couple of questions, so excuse me if I, if they're not clear, so you can clear some stuff up for me. So basically, you're asking tonight is to bump, bump a, an accountant, finance accountant, to a senior accountant position, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
So, yes, what, what, what I'm requesting your approval is to move accounts payable accountant to the position of senior accountant, and along with those, yes.
So, so in doing that, you'll have two, I'll speak a little, I, I don't think you are listening, do you hear me? Because I noticed you ask me a lot, that I'm asking, but, so you're at, so tonight we're going to approve this, this position to be a senior accountant.
That is correct.
So you'll have two senior accountants.
That's correct.
Okay, so, why is this position that we are adopting today, approving, if you will, going to be at a higher range, with a higher salary, I guess, than the existing finance senior accountant? So you have a.
Yeah, I, I think I understood your question.
Yeah, let me just say, just so, just for me, so I can clear it. So you have a finance senior accountant, then you have a finance accountant and a finance accountant. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but do you, are you saying that we, that you're requesting for a finance accountant to also be categorized as a finance senior accountant? So you'll have two senior accountants.
Correct. We'll have two.
With one tonight being of a higher salary than the existing senior accountant.
I believe they're at the exact same salary, not a higher.
Well, if you go with the payroll schedule of 2021, 2022.
Right.
The finance senior accountant is at 42,841.
Right.
And the finance accountant, both finance accountants at our, are at 41,429.
Right.
So what you're saying tonight is to put one of those finance accountants bumper up, or him, to a finance senior accountant at a higher rate.
Than what you have.
Salary than the existing finance senior accountant of 42,84.
That you have on your, on your schedule, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
It's been adopted.
Do we know the difference in that? Okay, could, could you explain?
Go ahead, thank you.
So, I think there's maybe, maybe a mistake in the.
Schedule?
Document you have right now.
Which one, the safe, the pay schedule that's been adopted by council and mayor?
I'm not sure that was the last one that was implemented, because the actual amount is 44,615 for, for the senior accountant, and it would be the same for both.
So I'm going with the last adoption of the payroll schedules, which was 21, 22, and it says here 42,841, the senior accountant.
Right, but Mayor, remember we came back with some adjustments, because there were corrections, and that's where those changes were, but it did come back to mayor and council.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So Carmen?
Yes, sir.
We have a senior accountant working for us.
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
How much is that senior accountant being compensated annually?
Her annual salary is 44,615.
Okay, and we're moving a person up to, and so she won't be getting paid anymore, or unless she's getting paid the same as we?
No, no. The only, I guess, increase for this change would be a difference of 4,197 in the annual salary.
Correct, so Carmen, there are some pay schedules that have incorrect information on them.
Yes, the very first.
And have those pay schedules been corrected?
Yes.
And have those pay schedules that have been corrected been provided to mayor and council?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you tell me when? You can get back with me.
Yes, I'll get back to you.
Because what I'm going with is the payroll schedules that we adopted 2021, 22, and the reason I'm concerned is because, maybe I should ask you, why do we need two senior accountants?
Right.
What, what's the purpose of that?
Thank you for, for asking that question. I'm going to let Jean answer that question, because it was an operational need on what the actual people were doing for the city, and I know when I spoke with both Jean and Carmen, we want to make sure that not, we're not working our people out of class. So you can talk operationally about the duties and responsibilities that you have for each of your people in, in.
Sure, absolutely. So, current senior accountant that we have does, is basically over our payroll, and I do not have a senior accountant who is over my AP part. My current AP accountant is doing the, the job of the senior accountant over the AP, she's just not classified correctly. So about, I'm going to say a year or so ago before I started, they reclassified, kind of rearranged. they reclassified, kind of rearranged, the AP payroll side of the department. And this happened to be one position that here's your duties that you're going to do, but it falls in line with the senior accountant position, not necessarily what an AP accountant would be doing. So she is approving, she is doing monthly reconciliations just like our current senior accountant is doing. An AP accountant does assisting of these activities, doesn't approve these. She's actually doing the position of a senior accountant, is not being classified as a senior accountant.
So Mr. Kissinger?
Yes.
If I... May I? Thank you. So we're talking about equity here, you know? And we've talked about equity, we've talked about transparency, we've talked about, you know, we want the fire department to be on the same page with all the employees and so forth. So I think I have, you know, a responsibility to the employees to practice what we preach. So I want to make sure before I approve this or not approve it, that I understand that you're asking, as a finance director, that you and your department have two senior accountants who are kind of doing different things or doing the same?
They're doing the same thing for two different sections of the department. One is over my payroll, one is over my accounts payable. So I have one who's approving all of the payroll side, and one that needs to be there to approve my AP side. And with a city this large, it's very difficult for one senior accountant to attempt to try to approve all of that and then us be able to continue to stay on top of everything, I guess you could say.
So you're giving her an increase?
Yes.
You're recommending that we give her an increase? And in fact, is she going... Correct me again. Is she going to be at the same salary as the existing senior accountant?
Absolutely.
They're both going to be earning $44,615?
Yes.
Okay. So like I go back to the payroll schedules that I felt were adopted. And I'll look back to the prior meetings when they were given to us. So let me ask you a little bit about the qualification to ask Mr. Kissinger because it wasn't included in our packet today, the job descriptions. And I know that it's recommended or, you know, that they have a bachelor's degree. I know how people feel about that nowadays. But do both have bachelor's degrees? Or one does, one does not? Tell me a little bit about that.
The current senior accountant does.
Okay.
The one that I'm asking for, she does not, but she has 15 years of experience doing this with us. And that's just with us. Prior to us, she worked for the county doing the same thing.
Yeah. And experience and institutional knowledge is very important. I realize that. But is this setting a precedence for every department in the city of Nogales to come up and say, you know what? I want to also request that an employee in my department be given the same opportunity that you're asking for today? Tell me how you feel about that.
Well, I mean, if another department happens to have a misclassification, like I believe this one is, any director could come to our acting city manager and ask for the same thing. I've been discussing this with Mr. Kissinger for two or three months. As soon as I started, I noticed that what she was doing did not match what her job said she's supposed to be doing. So from the start, I noticed it was wrong. Everybody else's matches. She's doing more than what her job says that she should be doing. So that is why I'm asking if we can have her as a senior accountant to match what she's actually doing in the office.
So all this time in the past, this issue was not raised until you came, and you thought that it was not equitable, if you will, if that's the right word?
I don't know what happened prior to me. I can only tell you that since I've been here and I have reviewed my people, reviewed their jobs, reviewed their job descriptions, that is when I noticed it. And so then I kind of, the first few months, I sat back and I watched to see, okay, is... Are they just doing something because they're somebody new? Or is this what they're really doing? She is really doing this job.
So you think this trend, if you will, will kind of take precedence? And perhaps, you know, other employees will start also advocating for their own, like everyone else does in every department?
Within my department, I can tell you that they won't. We've actually discussed our job positions and our job qualifications within my department. And in fact, our current senior accountant believes that this should have happened quite a while ago.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yes. I've spoken with that person, and she is not taken back by this at all. She believes it should have happened a long time ago.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have...
Go ahead, council.
Jean, from what I understand, it's just a $4,000 increase a year?
Yes, for the whole year.
Okay. So one of the problems that I've noticed here in the city with some of the city employees that we've lost in the past is because we can't pay them what they deserve. Am I correct? Would this be like a little... I know it's not a lot of money, it's $4,000. It's more of a common sense thing. So as is right now, these $4,000, where are we going to get this money from?
It's already in my budget.
In your budget?
It's in there. Due to the fact I did not have a collections person for so long, and then I also have not had... Because of the collections person, now that I have one, I didn't have a revenue position. So I've had money within my payroll. I don't have to make any adjustments whatsoever.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I just want to make it clear to the city employees and to everyone here that $4,000 is a lot for common employee. For me, it's a lot of money, $4,000, the public money. So I just want to make sure that I'm voting on something that is equitable. And you seem to have, which is a good thing, discussed with your employees. And I'm sure they hear, listen to these meetings, that you generated support from within your department. And the other employees can start speaking up and saying, I know we went through some changes in salary schedules a few months ago. And employees out there can start advocating for themselves with their directors. So that's a good thing.
And I feel that, I mean, that's why we're here, right? To, we work for the city. And if we're not happy, who do you talk to? You need to talk to your director. And that's what happened. I noticed, she noticed, she came to me, and I came to Mr. Kissinger. And now we're here with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
John, that's why I've always been saying that it's so important that one day we go, come back to merit increases. Because there's a lot of employees that do merit, you know? Not just a pat on the back, but an increase in money or an increase in positions. Because, you know, some make an effort to get to the position. And for one reason or another, they never get to that position. And I think this is a good move.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Put a middle lint in place. Okay, consideration possible action of Order 2021-12-076, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales approving a highway safety contract with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety for the reimbursement in the amount of $5,600... Is that $5,600? Yeah, $5,600 for the purchase of child safety seats and certified tech training.
So moved.
Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? E, consideration possible action of Order 2021-12-077, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales approving a highway safety contract with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety for the reimbursement of overtime of police officers working DUI, impaired driving enforcement in the amount of $4,000.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
F, consideration and possible action of Order 2021-12-078, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales approving a highway safety contract with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for reimbursement of overtime for the purchase of equipment radars in the amount of $8,069.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
G, consideration possible action of Order 2021-12-079, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving an agreement between the City of Nogales and North American Development Bank, NatBank, for the lateral connections to the international alcohol interceptor and erosion protection of the IOI.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number nine, council and there's reports of current events. Okay, we'll start with me. November first, KLD interview regarding border reopening. November the third, U of A student interview regarding border reopening. Concreet news interview regarding border reopening. Kegan Nine interview regarding border reopening. Then we had the border, the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers Press Conference. November the fifth, Arts Committee meeting with the county and residents of Nogales. Guest speaker at Pueblo High School. November seventh, Univision interview regarding border reopening. Same day, press conference at border with Presidente Municipal Jim and welcome to First Non-essential Travelers. November eighth, KTR News Phoenix interview regarding reopening. Univision interview regarding border reopening. Prensa Arizona, same thing. Fox News, Channel 10 interview, same thing. ASU students interview regarding effects of border restrictions. Channel 12 News interview regarding border reopening. Telemax interview regarding border reopening. Arizona Public Media interview regarding border reopening. On November the ninth, Radio Multimedia interview regarding border reopening. November the tenth, Connecta, Arizona, radio interview regarding border reopening. Same interview with Millenio TV interview. In November 11th, Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony. November 17th, Newsweek interview regarding potential caravan of migrants crossing into the US and the border reopening. And then same day, New York Times interview regarding border reopening. November 19th, Sego Executive Board Meeting. We had it in Patagonia. November 30th, KDOA interview regarding economic impact. Now, border has reopened, and we decorated the Christmas tree at Karen Park. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the help of that. And thank the first lady for helping me on that, too. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I have the report for the Casitas Navideñas. I mean, it's been a lot of work. Thanks, everyone that is involved. I really thank you. It's a lot of work. And I was, I want to let you know who is involved. It's the Cultural Arts Committee. There are 20 casitas. La Linea, Consulado Mexicano, the Boys and Girls, Moca Cafe, Metzcal School, Mary Darling, Mariposa Youth Coalition, Yada, Circles of Peace, Strengthening Families Program, the U of A, Trucas, Aztec Riders, Alma Basan, Zero Stress, Bobas Cafe, Citizen Auto Stage, Santa Cruz Training Program, Manuel Grisalva, and the Nogales Mercado. This year, I think it's much... Last year was beautiful. This year is much better. So every year, we're getting better, which is the best thing to do. And thank you, everybody, and thank you for supporting the program.
You're welcome.
That's all.
I also went to the opening of the border that, at midnight, whenever that was, it was... It was, it wasn't as it was expected. I mean, we thought there's going to be a big flood of people coming over, but it didn't happen that way, so... But anyways, I've been across the line a few times, and there really haven't been any lines coming to the US. Not through the regular lines and not through the sentry lines. So traffic is still pretty slow as far as people from Mexico coming to our side. We did the BFW Veterans Day ceremonies, parade ceremony at the wall, and the reception. It turned out to be a huge success. Everything was, it was nice, it was low-keyed. And, but it was a great event. And this Saturday, we have the Christmas parade. But we also have the BFW Fall Conference, which will be awarding the VOD and Patriots pin awards at the BFW Saturday night. So it's going to be a dinner and awards banquet. So that's going on Saturday also. So we'll see how that turns out. So that's all I got right now. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing, attended the opening of the border. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for the great job on the casitas. It looks... My wife works for the training center, and they're all happy doing them. I think a lot of people enjoy going over there and look at all the different models and everything, different subjects. And you do a great job on that. Thank you. Basically, you know, I've just been busy with Little League on trying to get our regionals secured for this year. We've been doing registration. We'll have registration again in December 7th at the Holiday Inn. And hopefully, kids come out and register because we need to get them out there. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I also attended the reopening of the border, Veterans Day Parade. I'd like to commend, I noticed that the Christmas tree was put up yesterday. So that's a great job. I'm looking forward for the Christmas parade. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, council.
I also attended the opening of the border. And I participated in the Veterans Parade and the event over by the wall. I also went to the La Linea Art Center. They celebrated their second anniversary. And that was a good event. On November 27th, right after, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, I took my sound system over to Karen Park and played some music for three hours, Christmas music. I sang a couple of songs behind the Christmas trees on what it would seem, just to please John.
Actually, Mrs. Melendez, somebody stole your idea. So my daughter was here from San Francisco visiting, and she, we went downtown to see the casitas. And she was so impressed, she's an active medical doctor in San Francisco, and she took pictures and really liked the idea. And so she's collaborating with a couple of doctors from San Francisco. And they're, the city mayor there, she, Mayor, and they're, you know, she's trying to see if they can do something like that next year there. So, yeah, they're adorable. You can't miss them. And I try to take my mom and try to go by every day. And every day, you see, you know, some new casita coming up. So great job. I think the community is really enjoying that. Thank you.
up. So great job. I, I think the community is really enjoying that. Thank you.
John?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to take this moment to thank, uh, Mayor and Council for giving me the confidence the last six months to act as your Acting City Manager. I also want to make sure that we recognize Mr. Thompson, who assisted me on, on this. And I also want to pledge to Mayor and Council that, um, starting immediately, that I will return to my duties of Deputy City Manager and support, uh, your Acting City Manager one hundred percent, as I have in the past and as always have. So again, thank you for the opportunity to, for the last six months to act as your, um, Acting City Manager. And again, thank you, Robert, for all your help. And don't think you're off that easy, because we'll still be looking for you for some additional help in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, future agenda items?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, when I was coming from Tucson, I saw the welcoming sign of, uh, Nogales. I didn't like it. It's no light, you can hardly see it. It's too high on the hill. So I think we have to do something with that. I'm sorry, Mr. Kissinger, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, well, thank you.
If we can figure out and put some lighting or something.
Only just lighting, because we can't come down off that hill, because we'll be in state right away.
Yeah, but lighting would be just perfect.
Yeah.
Because the sign is, it's gray, but you can hardly see it.
So I know we're in future agenda item?
Yes.
But that's our plan. We're, we're looking at putting some solar light, not only on that sign, but on both sides.
Yeah, on both.
They had already discussed this.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Yes.
Excuse me. Just on, on the same note, who owns the, the other sign in, in the entrance of Meadow Hills, where it says, "Welcome to Nogales"? Does the city own that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rotary and the Lions Club and all that?
We own that sign, sir. Well, I, I shouldn't say that. That sign's been there forever.
Forever?
Yeah. And it's nice. I think it's a little bit nicer than the one we have farther off.
I, and, and that's why that sign's still there. Um, I tried to get that sign that's currently, um, available to us on that pedestal, um, but I was unsuccessful.
It would have been nice.
Yes. I, I can tell you that the placement of the signs in a better location, uh, on A dot right, right away was, uh, an effort that we put a lot of effort into. I'm, I'm glad we were able to get the one on Highway eighty-two.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of effort to try to get them on there.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Kissinger, for next month, uh, I'd like to put down on the agenda item, uh, a detailed report from the, uh, what we, what does Chamber of Commerce, uh, do for us? Uh, what does, um, we're paying six thousand five hundred dollars, and I, I need, I, I don't know exactly what, what that encompasses. Are we, I noticed on the website, um, there's a gold and silver and bronze. I need to know at what level the city of Nogales is at, uh, because I, I believe, um, six thousand five hundred dollars is, uh, quite a lot of money. So if you can, um, have me a detailed report of, of what exactly, uh, those fees get us. And also, I want to start, uh, on the agenda item, start closing down Terrace Avenue. I tried to hunt down the original, um, um, concept designs. Uh, however, um, I've been asking other people outside the city, and I was unable to retrieve them. So, uh, I'm not gonna wait for that anymore. If we can just close down the street and, 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 and work out, we, I think we discussed having some kiosk on, on Terrace. So, uh, I just really want to, uh, expedite that on, uh, closing down Terrace Avenue. For tourists, of course.
Is that it? Go ahead.
To Michael or John? To you? Okay. So I, I want an update on the unfunded liability. Where, where are we with that? And also, um, I, I, oh, the unfunded liability?
Yes, PRS.
Uh-huh, the PS. Mm-hmm. PR, uh-huh. Um, yeah. Is she okay? Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I think the plan is we'll do a study session.
Okay.
We were gonna do it today, but the--
Yeah, I know.
--visual got s--
Okay.
Got sick, and so I think we're trying to, um, reschedule for January.
Oh, okay. That's fine. January. Okay. And also, um, I've asked, um, Mr. Kissinger a couple of times, um, what's the status of the employment of, if there is an employment? I'm not sure of that, of Mrs. Walker, the financial consultant? Please give us a, a report on that, please. A detailed report. Um, that way if, um, I raise some issues, uh, we, we have the information available. Um, the time she started, and how much we're paying her per hour, and, uh, and what's the purpose? Because I, I know that we, our current finance director's doing an excellent job. So I'd like a report on that. Thank you.
Is that it? Push it to adjourn. He needs to adjourn.
Thank you.
Take the rest of the day off.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. You think I can eat a sandwich?
Wow!
Yes.
Robert. 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 Thank you.